Right off the bat was Section 19 of the zoning bylaw. And Section 19, at first glance, held all the answers, okay, to the auxiliary units in the city. With everything that was there, what we came out with is that this was something that was in the toolbox that should be used, but it was broken. So we still had to stay on the side of the fence that we were opposed to rental licensing, that we were opposed to any sanctions until this got fixed. Once this gets fixed, then you have a great ally when it comes to the Realtors Association and the Hamilton District Apartment Association. The concerns that we did have was, like I said, if we were to go full steam ahead, we were going to lose so many good affordable rental units in the city. And with the waiting list that we have now pushing 6,000, we cannot afford to lose one single more unit than what we're already losing because we are losing them. The zoning, even though the zoning was there, and Section 19 allows for that one step up. So in a single-family zone, you can put in an additional unit and make it a legal two-family. This stuff wasn't being, people weren't being educated on it appropriately. And then, of course, we had out in Westdale, the student residence concerns. So I'm going to pass it over to Nick.
I'll speak quickly. We're short on time. Essentially, again, to reiterate, it was tough to stand behind the rental licensing. And our thought was why use a stick when you can use a carrot? Something like Section 19. We had to assume that the cost would end up getting passed down to the tenants, which would not support what we were trying to do with safe and sustainable affordable housing. And the recommendation today would stand the same as in 2013. From Section 19, the main thing to take away is it provides various straightforward options to add accessory units, which was in mandate at the time with Ontario Planning Amendment that came to bring in affordable housing in 2011. And because we don't need to, using Section 19, you wouldn't need to go through the rezoning and building permit processes, which are the most expensive and tedious parts of the process. You could merely apply for a building permit. This way would really encourage people to come forward and bring a lot of the units that were just out of the scope to be able to fall in line and be in compliance with the city.
So what's under Section 19 right now? And what we discovered is that every single unit that was being created had to be 699 square feet. When we stood here in 2013, it was stated by Planning Department that 699 square feet, that anything below that is small. And I've made the argument many times since 2013 that if we asked a person sitting on a shelter bed with their child, okay, if 699 square feet or 300 square feet would do, they would gladly take this 300-square-foot attic apartment. So this here is exclusionary. It is being obstructionist on behalf of us, the city, to say that everyone needs to have 700 square feet. We're even permitting the building of condominiums between 300 and 500 square feet. So by that one, we would allow for so many more units to be created. The minimum lot area of 270 square meters, and while I'm on this, we do not have consistency. We go from metric to imperial consistently. So, and this is confusing to the public. So 270 square meters, which is approximately 3,000 square feet lot size. The parking spaces allocated in the front yard or the backyard, and I have seen committee of adjustment reports as of late that have been allowing committee of adjustments for parking to have permit parking on the street as part of it. We got to rethink this, okay? We have to really take a look at the parking requirements. And it has even been just recently where people have had to dig up double driveways, okay, because they do not comply with this when they want to put an additional unit. So we got to rethink this. And that's the 50% of the front yard, and then where the side yard abuts the street. What we were looking for is that we need property owners to have a simple one-step solution. They need to know clearly out of a pamphlet. We show it down at City Hall how to build a deck, how to build a shed. We do not show anyone how to build an accessory unit. We don't put it out clear. People need to know, they need to be able to know that there is light at the middle of the tunnel, that they're not going to get turned down, that they're not going to end up in committee of adjustments. If we want to keep the buy-in on this high, we need to make it good. And we need to take out the things that the city can take out. Nothing against the Ontario Building Code. And I have to applaud, the city did make a change in April of 2015 or March to allow basements and cellars to be developed equally. So now, as long as that cellar complies with the Ontario Building Code, people can make habitable rooms in what is deemed a cellar, and that's 50% below the ground. Okay, and this takes me to the rethink. We need, the city needs to rethink, okay? Us as Realtors need to rethink. The landlords need to rethink. We need to rethink how we're approaching this. Everyone has to work together to educate, to inform, to assist, and not be obstructionist.
Thank you. Do you have, is there a lot more slides, or?
No, no. We just have the recommendations that were.
Not really. Just the recommendations. Donna covered this part already. This is what I was just going to speak to, and Donna already touched on it, so I won't go over it. Obviously, it has to be everyone working together to make sure staff is in line uniformly when people call to get the same sort of answers. And also, the Realtors Association and the Hamilton District Apartment Association more than willing to educate their members as well. We can touch on this slide as well, but again, it's pretty straightforward. It was also mentioned in the report that you guys will have there, that the solutions, we believe what they do indeed cover. And then when it comes to student housing, we can't forget about the issues that come with student housing as well. These are the main, obviously, criteria. The number one being noise issues in neighborhoods. So the recommendations were to create the response team. Universities and colleges grow with that, the demand for housing grows, so the neighborhood demands that there be more use-specific building, which again, right now, that is not in place. The off-campus student code of conduct and the ombudsman office, I'll speak to in a second here, when it comes to progress, because the good things we have to mention is with McMaster University, their off-campus student housing office has sort of acted as an unofficial ombudsman, and some great things have happened there with dealing with some issues. And then also have to mention at Mohawk, the college has been working with police services and municipal services to sort of pay more attention on the high-activity days, Frosh Week, St. Patrick's Day, extra weekends. And they really have been able to mitigate a lot of the issues when it comes to dealing with the noise in the areas. So we would hope that this would continue as well. I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to sum up?
Okay, we have on the speaker's list Counselor Johnson, followed by Counselor Whitehead, followed by Steve, followed by Renee.
Thanks very much. I simply wanted to say, thank you for your engagement. We're looking to hear from all stakeholders about their views about how we should proceed in this extremely complicated area of policy, and I'm just very grateful you've come forward with your views. Thank you very much.
And I just want to say, thank you very much to Counselor Johnson for supporting the purpose-built housing project, or at least going on the record in support of that purpose-built in Westdale at the McMaster area. We need more of this.
Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you for the presentation. You had a slide that sort of had me, you had five points on it. Hang on, back up for a second. The one you just had there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so implement off-campus student code of conduct. I know that I've been very involved through our legal and through Mohawk College and legal, and they've made it pretty clear that they're limited what they can do with, because students, or students in the eyes of the law, they are adults, and they have the rights of adults. So anything off-campus, unfortunately, is very difficult from a legal perspective for the college to address. They made that pretty clear in a number of our earlier meetings. So I wanted to identify that right from the get-go. We're putting a lot of resources into far greater resources in the post-secondary precincts than we are in the other location in the city of Hamilton, especially at move-in and move-out areas, in an inordinate amount. And we have proactive teams that continue, which is a cost to the taxpayer, probably spending, again, an inordinate amount of time in these particular precincts. But there's no offsetting revenue being generated to pay for those additional costs on the backs of the taxpayers. So I want to highlight that. The other issue I have is, I'm trying to understand, and this is where the delicate balance is. First of all, you talked about changing it from 699 square feet. I'm not sure what we're trying to achieve. I know that I got houses with several people living in rooms. Is that what we're trying to achieve?
No. And to answer that, Counselor Whitehead, as you're aware, the city does have an eight-habitable-room bylaw, so eight-habitable rooms, which according to planning, would allot for six bedrooms. Okay, so my understanding is in Westdale, they're not bothering properties that are those eight-habitable rooms, have a single-car drive, and house those six students, those six bedrooms. We are not, we have never supported rogue building, okay? It's dangerous. It's dangerous for the occupants. It's dangerous for the people purchasing them, dangerous for people selling them. So, you know, that's what you're talking about there is student houses being, you know, built, walls, et cetera. We need to stop that.
Okay, I appreciate, because what I know with the presentation, it was more of a go-forward basis, how we can hopefully alleviate some of the challenges that we're currently experiencing throughout the community, allow the illegal setup. So on a go-forward basis, I think there's some really interesting and very positive suggestions coming from you. It doesn't really address, from my perspective, the issues we're inundated with, and that's all the illegal operations and the substandard living conditions and lack of access for our fire or bylaw to get into the buildings to determine safety issues. Your presentation really doesn't talk about pre-existing stock. You're talking about.
I'm going to differ with you on that, because since 2013, since we came out with a sustainable safe housing compliance program, we estimated that if we worked at it and educated our members, that we could bring 7%, 8% of the pre-existing stock, we could bring that into compliance. Okay, right now, we've had three years of record sales in the city. We have lost so much opportunity in those properties changing hands. And do they contain illegal units? Yeah, Donna, right, they do. Do we, can we do anything about it? No. You know, it is what it is. There's people looking to buy it, and the city, we don't have an answer for it. So that is, you know, yeah, we're frustrated. You know, it happened at the HDA, you know, our association at HDA, we are frustrated. This has been, like I say, three years. With the pre-existing stock, and don't refuse the post-secondary school precincts, okay, with the precincts that Renee is more concerned about, okay? The areas, you know, Counselor Green's area, who's looking for very good affordable housing. You know, it's, these areas, there's two separate things. You've got, and when you say that the money isn't coming into the city, it is coming into the city, because those properties are selling for 10%, 20% more. Their tax assessments are more than the rest of the city. So the city is benefiting from it, maybe indirectly, but it is benefiting from those increased property values from the student rental areas. But the properties that Renee is more concerned about, those are the 300-square-foot attic units. We need them fire inspected. We need building permits. We need the owners. The owners are willing to do what needs to be done, if it's possible.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. The, I think, I have some of the same issues. In fact, I just dealt with a home that illegally duplexed on Belfour, of all places, one of the, you know, a very wealthy area. And of course, everyone's hands up in the air, because clearly, they're concerned about the value and assessment when you start evening up a particular street. So there's so many other things that come into play. Saturation, stability of neighborhoods means that you have to have a balance of homeownership and people living in their homes versus, you know, I got a neighborhood with 80% rentals. That's just way too high for stability of that neighborhood. So I'm trying to understand, did you do any work on what you think the right balance might be?
In the city of Hamilton, I think our building permits are greatly slanted right now to our median high-quality housing. You know, like it's, you know, one of our slides said the rethink, right? And I know it's a little bit of a culture shock, but we have to rethink. Is it really feasible for us, when we're surrounded by the green belt, when we're pressured by the province, to think that we can actually maintain some prestigious, single-family residential areas in the city? You know, like it's, accessory units are as a right. And in Hamilton, we've grown, we're stretched by that. So, you know, in areas, to have a granny flat in your basement, or to make a conversion, if it complies with fire code and rebuilding code, and if it complies with all that, really, we have to ask ourselves, why are we proposing it? Why?
Yeah, I get where you're coming from there, and there's certainly provincial legislation, but there are criteria in regards to stabilizing neighborhoods. And one of them is, for example, and you mentioned it, but you didn't provide a solution. That was on the parking. I wasn't sure what the point you were making, because one of the biggest issues I have is that our neighborhoods have limited parking, and what is transpiring is that you're getting a lot of people from so many saturated neighborhoods, parking in front of houses and blocking off the quality of life, ability for people to visit their family in other neighborhoods because all those parking spots are being taken up because of the saturation in a neighborhood next door.
And once again, you know, we, as Realtors, as a body of Realtors, we span the whole city. You know, we Flamborough to Grimsby to out to the lake. There are neighborhoods that are accustomed to having streets without many cars parked on them. And then you get down to Mathis Tosh and Stony Creek, where it's lined up with cars on both sides of the street, and always has been, and that's all single-family homes. So it, like I say, it's a rethink. Is it a reasonable expectation? You know, can we allow maybe 60% lot coverage of a large, but cars run away, is the LRT going to take some pressure off? These are questions I think that we have to ask ourselves as, you know, can we create more parking lots?
I can give one example, where currently the, let's go back to, as I say, the exact right number. But for Section 19, I don't know what slide it is, there's a minimum requirement per driveway width at 8 feet 10 inches. So if you double that, you end up being something like four inches short of allowing two spots on a 35-foot lot, which is pretty standard in Hamilton to have a 35-foot lot. So if some small adjustment like that could be made, maybe to allow on a more standardized lot size, which is 35 feet, two spots, then that obviously opens up the door for a lot more options as far as having two off-street parking spots. No, in most of these neighborhoods, there are a lot of grandfathered-in double spots, but it's complying with current law, current bylaw.
So, and Counselor Whitehead, on that, when we have this type of, this type of thing going on without permits, okay, and what Nick has just brought forward, the 50% of the front, and our bylaw says 2.7, Toronto's bylaw says 2.6, and all the way through the rest of our bylaws, it says 2.6, except when it comes to a Section 19 conversion. And then all of a sudden, you need 2.7, which means that the person who's sitting down there in East Hamilton cannot get a permit, okay, without going to committee of adjustments, and he's going to get denied. Okay, so, like, we've got to stop this nonsense. If we change it to, and that's exclusionary, you know, we're being obstructionist, we need a 2.6. They can get two parking spots on a 35-foot lot, get those cars off the street. People can have their friends.
So, including approach, because I can only just, actually, because I was looking for Marty earlier, so I just had a couple houses in that precinct that have wide in the driveway, because it's a single approach, so three residents, they all got tickets for a car to park in the driveway, because the cars that had there were wider than the actual approach, so not up into the driveway, down the road, and approached it out.
Well, you know what, it's 2.6 in the rest of the bylaw, but I don't think that we're at a position in our society where we can restrict the number of cars in council paths. So, you know, if there's two cars, or if the people have three teenagers, they may have four cars. So, like, this isn't, this, the point I'm making is it's not all about rental housing, okay? The people, Renee is moving out of the shelters, they don't have cars. The one living in the attic apartment isn't the one contributing to the parking on the street. So I think we have to stop saying, oh, it's going to be that issue. I think we have to look a little bit more globally and say, okay, we're not being obstructionist here.
Last month, it's, I love Mathis Tosh.
It was not. It was not.
And we had our parking on the whole side, majority of our actually, I don't know, we had most complexes, but it wasn't after parking was out of the complexes. So we have a little bit of plans to, I think, on visiting or adding, adding parking spots, you know, buy another parking spot for, 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 whatever, parking. So it becomes a challenge for me.
So that has nothing to do with illegal development, right? That's quite legal, and it's a problem, so.
Steve.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm wondering if anyone here, perhaps our presenters, knows if Section 19 applies to all residential areas of Hamilton, like every residential street in Hamilton?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Section 19 goes from C, which is a single-family zone, all the way up to H, okay, which is commercial residential. It allows for more development happening in H zone, but for every zone, a C, okay, a single-family home, sitting in the Z zone, under Section 19, as a right, can add accessory unit and become a legal two-family home. A legal duplex, two-family home sitting in a D zone, can become a legal three-family home, and so forth, all there. Just one unit, though.
The homes that seem to have been converted using Section 19 seem to be predominantly in the lower city. I don't see that so much, well, and perhaps in the areas of McMaster and Mohawk, but I don't see this so much in the areas like, for example, Dundas and Castor. Is that a reasonable assertion?
Yeah, because I think secondary units, I think that the demographics of it are, you know, starved homes, people retiring, the large homes. So Counselor Green's area gets hit really hard with it, because he's got 2,000, 3,000 square-foot homes in his area that have become impossible for young families to maintain, especially with utilities, right? So that's how companies have so much illegal development in those areas, you know, chopping them up into more chewable, you know, to make it profitable for the owner. So in Counselor Green's area, he's got some houses that have been illegally converted to four-plexes and five-plexes, and the most they could ever go is two-family, so.
Okay. I noticed in the presentation, I read through it, so you didn't cover it because of the time constraint, but I noticed in the presentation that there was, one measurement was proposed, and that was the number of housing units added. And I thought that that would be a good performance indicator from the perspective of investors and also prospective renters. But I'm wondering if any thought has been given by your respective associations to some types of measures which would be related to the neighborhood quality of life, so that other stakeholders in the neighborhood who are not included in the investor or renter group are also brought into the evaluation?
The evaluation of.
Of the effectiveness or the utility of this for the neighborhood. This is kind of similar to what Counselor Whitehead was asking about the quality of life in neighborhoods.
So the, right now, the city, because we've had so much rogue development over decades, like it's been, we have no idea, I don't think our committee could even come up with an idea how many illegal units were out there. But the Section 19 allows for one additional unit, okay? We would still have a net loss of units in the city, but what, you know, so we'd still lose those houses, but what we would end up with is a quality, okay? They'd be safe, and it'd be sustainable, and it would be quality-living accommodations and affordable for the people. So the movement, you know, that's, I think that's something that would be more with the census reports, that we give that information, even.
Perhaps I asked the question poorly. What I'm looking for is a quality-of-life measurement for the people who are neither renters nor investors, but are stakeholders in the neighborhood by virtue of being residents?
Okay, so the person who owns the property, I would say that our Section 19 ensures the quality of life for the people that live there. Section 19, when used properly, makes sure that areas are not over-intensified. It only allows the creation of one additional unit. And as I've already pointed out, we're well aware, there's areas in the city that have four or five illegal units in them. So Section 19, when I say about sharpening the toolbox, that sharpens a tool for us, so that we can properly identify and properly direct people, okay, to get these units legalized.
Is there a number of units within a given area that Section 19 will allow for conversion? In other words, if I understand what you've just said correctly, potentially, a street could be doubled in units?
Section 19 does have a radio separation for the H zones, okay? So that does have 180-meter radio separation for H zones, but for, I think, you know, we're focusing this way as if we're going to get a decrease, it actually is going to be looking the other way. We're going to lose units. You're going to have the person on streets in East Hamilton that are C-zoned, you're going to have those come down into, that are currently three-plexes and four-plexes, have those come down to two-family. So it's going to be a bonus, I would say, to neighborhoods. It's not going to be any convenience to neighbors.
Okay. At McMaster, there's a project where they have a Google-type car that I understand was going to be going up and down all of the streets of Hamilton in 2015, summer of 2015, and was going to be databasing the characteristics of the neighborhood to determine quality of life, kinds of things. And just an observation and your comment, if we were aware of where the rental accommodations are, it would be much more meaningful to be able to evaluate the quality-of-life changes that would be brought by any changes that are made, Section 19 or otherwise. And so the support of your associations, if not of licensing, I can see from your report that that's not what you can support. But would you support a registry?
Well, you know, conversation has been had over registry, and it's, like I said, the tools, the toolbox was sharpened, that we have something that we could work with, of course. You know, we, you know, sometimes I think that our industry gets painted with. You know, we, you know, sometimes I think that our industry gets painted with some type of, like, greed commission brush, but that's not the case. You know, Realtors are known to probably do more than any other group for communities and for community activism, so we're looking for better housing. We don't want, we don't want anyone to lose life in a house.
To the chair, a rhetorical question was asked earlier by one of the presenters. Is it appropriate for me to provide a comment as an answer? That question?
You have the latitude to ask or question any parts of the presentation as presented.
Thank you. You had asked earlier about, with regard to units when they're being sold, or properties when they're being sold that have illegal multi-units, and I think the question was, what can we do about it? I would just provide the observation that if the property is rented as what it, if it's represented as what it actually is, that would be very, very helpful. I've seen a number of times where properties are being represented or implied to be something other than what they're legally zoned for, and that has been very difficult to deal with in lower-city neighborhoods I live there.
I agree with you.
Okay. We have on the speakers list Renee, Paul, John, Nigel, Larry. We don't have a time restraint on this. Just keep in mind that at some point, the sun will go down, and we'll all need to get back to our families, so if you can, try to be as concise as you possibly can in both your questions and in your answers. This is why we cap it at five minutes, because it can go on forever. We have Renee. The floor is yours.
Also, my question, thanks.
Paul?
Renee, thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say again, thank you for the presentation, and so that everyone is very aware, this was the culmination of several months' worth of consultancy across the board, and I think it really lists a significant number of options that we could try to utilize going forward. So, to Nick and Donna, a couple of questions to you, and Counselor Whitehead and others have touched on this as well. So, certainly, we have a unique problem in Hamilton with a significant stock of older properties. These are the properties that have difficulty complying with current zoning and/or bylaws. Do you feel that this program certainly could take steps towards resolving these issues and bringing some of the older stock into compliance? That's my first question. I have one other, but I'd like to hear an answer for that one first, perhaps.
So, when we talk about bringing properties into compliance, we're talking about not only the city's building department, okay, the building code, we're talking about fire safety. And the, by, you know, by making some of these changes and by getting the ball rolling, like, right now, we're not doing anything, but if some of these obstruction, obstructions were left off or were changed, and if there was a culture shift at City Hall in the planning department to get these through, okay, to, where the objective was to create, to assist people in creating this, that this is a good thing, it's not a bad thing, you know? Yes, the answer is yes. We could, we could get these put through. Our association right now, I think we have 14,000 units that go through on an annual basis, probably 25% of those, I would think, maybe 20%, 25% may be multi-residential properties, so, yeah, we could, they could be big change.
Could I also get you to go back to the mic? So, the reason is, is that this is being livestreamed right now for the purpose of people who...
Oh, I was moving over there.
Yeah, the purpose is that people that are, not just here, but perhaps, I'm not sure, but maybe over...
Right, that's no problem.
Okay. Yep, but just for those that couldn't be here today, there's going to be lots of people who are very interested in your presentation, and if it's not through the microphone, it won't be caught on the archive.
I was trying to slip out there.
Okay, John, or sorry, Paul?
Thanks for that, Don, I appreciate it. Certainly sounds like this could be a good step in the right direction towards cleaning up some of our historical or older stock in the city. I think everyone does recognize that there will be places deconverted or lost, but overall, I think if implemented properly, it sounds to me that the caliber, if you want to call it, or quality of units could potentially go up with that, so. Which leads me to just my last question, my second question here, and again, it's been stated around the room as we've been discussing here. So, an important theme, and this has been stated by various stakeholders as well as the city here, is there is a, there's a difficulty quantifying the number of secondary suites or apartments in the city of this type of caliber. So, if this, again, if this program were implemented, could this or would this not be a start of a process that we could start to put real numbers towards the, towards this segment of the apartment world, if you want to call it, so that we can decide how suitable our measures would be?
Well, 100%, I think that there's a lot of measurables in this, you know, all the way from the number of building permits that are being applied for, to statistics that are coming out of the Realtors Association of Hamilton-Burlington, to feedback to the Hamilton District Apartment Association, even to feedback to Renee's group, like, this is something which is 100% measurable. And, you know, and the city building department, they know how many units are, how many applications are being put in for change of use, and that's what these go under. This is a change of use from single-family home to two-family, or two-family to three-family. So, yeah, this is measurable, very. And as far as improving the stock, since we made this proposal in 2013, all, the only way that the illegal stock has gone is up, okay? So, there's a lot of illegal conversions have continued over the past three years. We haven't...
John?
There's talk here about availability and accessibility. I haven't heard the word accessible in relation to disabled, and I just wonder how that can be effectively increased. And on top of that, then, if there's going to be a quantifying, a measurable, and a list of some sort, that has to be available, because right now, there's a, and I sit in on the seniors' housing subcommittee and the Housing and Homeless, and the availability is great, but the disabled situation is poor in that they can't go to a source and say, I need a place now, where can I go? And they have all kinds of frustration when they find out a unit that they've been sent to is not, you know, is not for them.
Right, and accessibility and affordability kind of go hand in hand. The province of Ontario has really identified that. There are grants available for property owners if they wanted to build accessible units, and this is why, okay, a reduction, and so, as an example, and I know properties in Counselor Green's ward probably better than any other ward, but those properties measure on the outside about 1,400 square feet, okay? By the time you measure that main-floor unit, you've only got, like, 680 square feet. You're not getting an apartment in there. And those main-floor units would be perfect for accessible living, you know, a ramp up to the front porch, and, yeah, and with the government grants. So, do we, do we get questioned by people who want to take advantage of these grants? Yes, we do all the time. It's not possible, though. We cannot build that, that type of housing in Hamilton unless it's purpose-built. Right now, under, with changes, with changes, yes, we could.
But then obviously, need changes on the, in the city situation.
On the Section 19.
Yeah, and then, again, a, and I say again, a list of some sort, a source of some sort, where those who need can find them, because there isn't, right now, the city is poor in being able to provide, you know, what's available where, as far as the disabled is concerned.
Well, I think in any listing for apartments, whether it be on Kijiji or through the Realtors Association, we do, on our listings, we do have a tick-off box that says that it's disabled ability, but like I say, unless we're able to develop those units, it's not possible.
Okay. A thought, you're talking, you talk, well, a bit of a repeat. Has there been any thought or discussion with the city to have a one-stop information process, similar to what they have for small business?
Yay!
I think that's what she just presented.
Has there?
That question is not a question, in fact, it was something they just presented, and something that...
No, I just wondered whether or not they have been promoting the idea, and have they had any success?
No, we haven't had any success, and we are continuously promoting it, so, thank you.
That's it, and obviously, everybody at the table here and yourselves have to keep on leaning on the, on the province. I've seen the minister's mandate, and they're not quite up to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Nigel?
Ms. Donna, in your presentation, you said, "This plan can bring 70% to 80% of non-compliant units into compliance." I don't know how you could make that statement, but you made it. Later, in answer to a question from Steve, you stated you didn't know how many illegal units are in existence. Confirms what I just said. You made a statement, you can't back it up. Next question, perhaps the board can assist in identifying illegal units. You're representing the sellers, what does the real estate board do when they know a unit's not in compliance? Do they tell the potential buyers, do they put it in their ads? There is a responsibility for your organization. I don't know that you're fulfilling that. And last, but not least, you say that you want to speed up the process to add more units by building permit only. That's all we should have to do, is have a building permit. You don't need to get zoning changes. But where is the ability for the city to inspect after the building inspection, and people make changes? Where is the ability to do that, so?
Okay, so, I'm just going to break your question up there into three parts. Number one, as far as the number of units. When we first set out on this, all we were armed with was the data, okay, from the, from our association. At that time, we estimated, okay, and it wasn't done, it wasn't just a toss in the dark, from taking a look at the listings that were out over a period of time, we estimated that at least 70% of those units, okay, were just one off of being compliant. So, what I'm talking about there is a single-family home, which was a two-family, maybe the two, or the two-family home that was in a D zone, that could be legalized as a two-family and additional unit put onto a triplex. So, this is a little bit complex, so that's on one side of it. Do we know the exact number of illegal units out in the city? No, we don't, okay? That number could easily be obtained by the city of Hamilton, though, because IMPAC often puts out on their things if it's a four-plex or a triplex, et cetera. We don't have, we don't have access to that. As far as our Realtors, we have been fighting long and hard, okay? We've been following this since 2008, and we have been fighting long and hard to work with the city to make sure that we can somehow get these zoning verifications fast, that we can, that we, that somehow our residential reps can put down the correct information. That's very difficult to obtain, very difficult and costly. So, for the most part, the, as a selling agent, they are by law, by provincial law, obligated to do what the seller requests them to do. And when you're representing a buyer, if the buyer says, "Take me out there, by provincial law," you take them out and you sell them, okay? If the stuff hits the fan after it hits the fan. We're looking to protect our Realtors. We would love change in this. We would love, we would love where it says, you know, this is on the registry, or this has building permits. We would love that. Yeah, no, but we would love that, believe me. Really, huh?
And I agree with that, too.
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is, is that we would love a measurement, okay? It's, you know, there's one person who gets sued in a real estate deal, it's not the lawyer, it's always the Realtor. So, the liability for Realtors is huge, and when it comes to multi-residential properties, it goes up exponentially. It's terrible.
Okay, you mentioned that IMPAC knows, and it would be easy to get the information from IMPAC. I could almost guarantee you, on the street I live on, there's been conversions made illegally. I bet you IMPAC doesn't know about any of them, because who's going to tell them?
Have you contacted the City Hall about illegal?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and have they been there? Have they inspected the properties?
They did.
Okay, and what's been done?
They don't tell IMPAC.
No, but what's been done to those property owners? Have they had a cease?
They had to have an inspection done, bring them up to compliance, two out of the three. I don't know about the third one. But to your comment, you said IMPAC could give the information. I beg to differ, IMPAC cannot give you what they don't have.
Yeah. No, we don't measure, it's, like, we can't mandate the property owner to provide us with zoning verification, unfortunately. We wish that we could, but we can't.
So, if I understand that the property owner can misrepresent their property by saying it's a single-family when it isn't, and you can't do anything about it, is that correct?
What, that the property owner's saying it's single-family, or the property owner says it's two-family?
Well, they say it's single-family, and when in actual fact, it's two-family.
If the Realtor makes a misrepresentation, it's a material nondisclosure on the sale, and there's recourse for that, and there's a whole complaints process that they can have. I don't know if it's through this body, I think it's through the Ontario Real Estate Association, or is it this body?
The Real Estate Council of Ontario.
That's correct. So, there is recourse and professional standards that they do have, and there's recourse for lawsuits based on what's a material nondisclosure.
Yeah, and it could go either way, it could be somebody saying it's two-family.
And, you know, we're not, we're not arguing that element of it, okay, because the zoning verification is something that we know that the city's working on. I think the city's working to make it faster, to make it more affordable, and they have provided us now with zoning maps, so that makes it a little bit easier. And we have been educating, we've had the city in to educate our members for the past two or three years on this, so, and if there is misrepresentation, like I said, there's one body that gets sued big time, and that's the Realtors for misrepresentation.
Any more questions, Nigel?
No.
No? Larry, and then I'm going to put myself on the first-time speakers list, and then after that, we'll have Steve on the second-time speakers list. Larry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I hope I don't sound like I'm looping around, but a comment you made is that the number of illegal stock units have gone up significantly in the city of Hamilton, is that correct?
By observation, yes, yeah.
And have they gone up through repurposing of an existing homeowner, or through resale, or through investment?
Through, when you say resale, meaning?
Meaning it was a single-family home, somebody purchased it, did the same owner own it and turned it into a multi-res unit, or did a new owner purchase it and turn it into a multiple unit?
All right, so, if I understand you right, like, where are these?
When does a transition happen from non-conform, or from conforming to non-conform at the point of purchase?
So, yes, upon purchase. So, when a city like Hamilton, which is really on the uptake, okay, and they do have these large homes, which are, you know, between 2,500 and 3,000 square feet, I'm talking more about lower-city homes and homes which are in the university precincts or post-secondary school precincts, they become very prone, okay, because whether it be a student rental or just a regular rental, when someone is paying $400,000 for that house that needs, you know, $50,000 worth of repairs, the normal rental rate will not cover that. The only way they're going to make any form of, you know, be able to carry that house is by creating that illegal unit, and that's what's happening.
So, we're back to the conversation...
They're getting busted, but... They're getting busted, but...
Who starts it, who finishes it, what's the role for somebody to play in it? I recognize that if somebody were to sell it, does it identify that it generates X dollars in rental value, even though it's deemed a single-family home, and is that allowed to proceed? I mean, we're feeding the whole issue of non-compliance, and, and, I mean, I don't want to go around that barn too many times, but you're on record as saying that you will trade all multi-res non-conforming for duplexes in the city. That's, that's the gist of this presentation, is that what I heard?
Say that again, please repeat that.
You're, you're prepared, as your association, to ensure very aggressive enforcement to get rid of all the multi-res non-conforming units and only allow as-of-right Section 19 duplexes? You're, you're willing to make that trade?
Okay, so, us as Realtors, we're, we're in the game to sell real estate, okay? Our relationship with the city of Hamilton is one to assist the city to be, to be a good partner. So as far as educating our members as to what's illegal and what's not, the ball has been dropped, the ball was dropped here back in 2013, when I stood right here in these council chambers and made that presentation. At that point, 90% of our membership thought that we somehow defeated rental licensing, when in fact, all that happened was it was tabled, okay? Everyone just went on their merry own way. I can blog about it till my eyes fall out, okay? But the city has been silent on this, and this has caused a big problem. So this committee, I wel, I welcome this committee, I welcome the change, or I welcome the forward thoughts, but we need more publicity around this. We, we need to tackle this again. And we need to be able to educate our members, because right now, our members don't think they, there's anything happening.
So I guess, my, my...
Yeah, well, they, our members, a lot of our members believe that, that this was defeated.
Okay.
And that's very truthful, that's just the way they think.
So, so we're back to the issue, we have two property types, and, and we're, we're talking about the as-of-right Section 19 making that more, more accessible. But somewhere woven in this conversation is the conversation that if we get rid of the multi-res non-conforming or illegal units, that this is a fair trade. We can, we can, whatever we lose in stock in the, in the illegal multi-res units, we will gain in the duplex units. Is that the trade that we're talking about?
All right, you're, I think, there's no, there's no division here between the illegal two-family unit and the legal, okay? We're talking about the same house, right? There's, the difference between the illegal one is it's a single-family home with an illegal apartment built in the basement, or in the attic, or main floor, right? It's just, it's got two units in it. When the garbage truck comes down, they only pick up one bag of garbage. It's only recognized as a one-unit house, one-family house. By making application to the building department, okay, to change use to a two-family home, all right, there's, there's no difference there in stock. It's already there. What it means is, is that when we walk out on that balcony, we know there's been a building inspection, we know that balcony is safe, we know that no one's going to lose their life, we know that people aren't going to die in the basement. And hey, we can mince it all we want, that we don't want intensification. But I think that as citizens of this city, we have an obligation, as Realtors, we have an obligation, to make sure that these properties are safe and they're compliant. And when we take a look and see that there's only a few changes necessary, that we could get people down into the building permit department, it, it's very exasperating.
So my final comment would be that, as Nigel and others have pointed out, we don't have a clear handle of how many illegal multi-res units there are, we don't know what the uptake on a Section 19 compliance would be. So making drastic changes on either side of that housing stock will be difficult until we get a better sense of what the inventory piece that we're talking about, because otherwise we may be biting our hand, or biting our nose despite our face. We may lose stock that we might actually have endeared closely into this community by, by shifting in some other direction.
How would we, but I just have a question there, how would we lose stock?
It's not, we're not in a debate scenario. And in fact, I could say that this is somewhat unusual, that we have two agencies represented already at this table, presenting here in this fashion.
Thank you.
Right, like, that, that's a bit of an anomaly, because now we've kind of opened it up where if any of us want to spend an hour to kind of pontificate on our individual thoughts on this issue, we've already have the Hamilton District Apartment Association. Nick, you're already a member of this committee, and we've now kind of changed how we, how we're going about this conversation. So we've, we've kind of done that. I'm going to pass the chair. We're going to try to wrap this up, because I feel like there's been some inherent contradictions in, in terms of how I know things. And then if there's second-time speakers, we'll allow that to happen. But I do want to note how unusual it is that we have members of this committee kind of engaging in this way, right? So we already have a subcommittee, and like, just, I feel like we might be duplicating work and potentially time. So I'm going to pass the chair over. Lots of comments have been made. The one, I think, at the end was, was most telling, the thought that we've defeated this. And if I'm understanding you correctly, today, you're here presenting before us, through you, Madam Chair, Section 19 as an alternative to the registry, is that correct?
No.
Okay, thank you, that's very important, because there have been some inherent contradictions in your prediction, in your presentation. Donna, I've read your LinkedIn blogs, I've followed this closely. In one breath, we're saying we're losing stock, and another breath, we're saying that it's going up, the illegal units are going up. I just need you to know that the real estate industry in this city has done very well. Is that fair to say, over the last couple of years here, very well, the real estate industry?
Very well, meaning?
Meaning we're the hottest real estate market in, in Ontario, probably top five in the country.
The real estate mar, the, the number of units?
Yes.
Being sold is actually, is actually down, right?
You're making more money now than you ever have before, it's in the papers all the time.
No, well, I, I, okay, so, I don't want to get into that part of it, because that can be really, it's, that's a complex avenue. But the real estate, the real, people's property values have been increasing at a record pace in the city of Hamilton, yeah. Property values have been escalating at a record pace.
Hottest real estate market. So, you know, I say all that to say you guys are doing a great job. You've, you've stated your mandate through you, Madam Chair, is to do well by your sellers, real estate folks in this city, the ones that are good, I know there's a lot of them, they're making great bucks. But I have to tell you that your, your use of Section 19 in this context, to me, feels a bit misleading. How I have experienced Section 19 as it relates to the Committee of Adjustment, Madam Chair and members of committee, is that people use it after they've been caught in an illegal scenario. So they use the as-of-right as a way to continue to have, I guess, consideration at the Committee of Adjustment. And so if you have a triplex, they take it toward, a door down, they say, "Oh, I'm sorry I got caught in the conversion, I'm going to use Section 19." Our Committee of Adjustment decides that it's minor in nature, I happen to not think so. They take the door down, it's just a duplex, Committee of Adjustment goes away, the inspectors go away, they put the door back up, it's a triplex. And so there, there really has been lawlessness around this, and you may remember, and if you don't, I'll, I'll share with members of this committee, in fact, they wrote a story, the Canadian Real Estate Wealth Magazine wrote a story about this very issue, quoting me, the big bad councillor, who stated that they should lose their right for Section 19 if they're caught in illegal conversion by our planning committee. Because developers, real estate agents, property owners were rushing to convert as many as they possibly could, those that got caught, they would then appeal it to the Committee of Adjustment using Section 19. Having said all of that, through you, Madam Chair, I need you to know, Nick, we've had conversations, Aaron, Paul, others, that there's much within that I agree with. I agree with the equitable distribution of density across all communities. It hasn't been the case in Hamilton, but Ancaster, Bimbrook, you know, the idea of granny suites, we're going to have an aging population, I believe in fire code, I believe in good, sound density intensification and development, I believe in all of that stuff, the sustainability, absolutely. And I think and feel that Section 19, as presented with some of these considerations, has a place as the carrot in the registry scenario. Those that want to continue to operate outside of the laws and the bylaws of this city must be held to account, right? And so that's, that's where we're stuck with as a committee. I mean, we've gone through all of this stuff, it's great, but we have a subcommittee dealing with this, we've been dealing with this now for four months, five, well, way more, a year probably now, and I feel like we're getting closer to it. So, so Donna, at this point, there's no questions, I just, you know, I, I wanted to thank you for coming, I have read your posts, it's a balanced approach, right? And I think that this does fit inside of our ongoing conversations around what a voluntary registry would look like. I.e., you're a good property owner, you have, you know, safe spaces, adequate, dignified places for people to live, here's your, here's your bonus. The last thing that I'll say on the way out, Madam Chair, through you, that I would highly encourage you, highly encourage you, invite you, to present this at our Open for Business. Why? Is because as much time and energy as we've spent on this, we, not that we only have, but present here today are bylaw, if you come for Open for Business, you'll have the directors of every department necessary, of which I think you guys are already sitting on, Open for Business, they're the Realtors. And it will give them a better understanding, allow them to address some of the shortfalls that you've, that you've come up with. So out of this committee meeting, I'd like to, you know, not a referral, but an invitation, a motion to, to, to invite you, or I can't refer you to, but invite you to the Open for Business. So that's my statement, there's no questions, Madam Chair. I will take the, the floor back. Is there, is there a need for second, I want you guys to think, is there a need for second time? If there is, then we'll go there. Well, we're going to go to Steve first then, if that's the case.
You said that the zoning verification was costly and slow, and I would just point out that the zoning verification can be done online, there's an express service for $169, it's a two-day service. $169 is less than one-half of one-tenth of 1% of the value of a $400,000 house, so I have no idea how that can be too costly. And as far as the two-day service goes, when I used it recently because of a problem in our neighborhood, which is very similar to what is being discussed, I had it not in two days, but I had it in one day.
And I appreciate that, as, as councillor Green has said, I've, I've blogged extensively on, on, you know, I've included that on my blogs, the zoning verification certificates. I think, you know, when we get down to 1% and everything, that we're kind of losing sight. As, as Realtors, our members do not have ownership in these properties, okay? Our, our members are, unless they're putting a sign up, they have, and even then, it's not until that property is sold that they have any type of interest in it. So the onus does, it, you know, we're, we're supposed to verify that the property is, you know, recognized as a legal one-family or two-family. But when those zoning verifications come back, okay, so it will come back and it will say that it's a legal two-family home, or a legal non-conforming two-family home. You know, sometimes that house has an additional apartment, like it's a three-family. The agent does put on the remarks that it's a legal two-family home, okay? And then in the bedroom section, or the room section, it states that it's three kitchens. We know for a fact that bylaw is there shortly after. So we are assisting the city, in a very strange way, we are assisting the city in shutting down the illegal units. Our, our members must put down those rooms as they exist, so we are assisting the city. We're not allowing any changes there.
Very, very generous, appreciate that. John, sorry, Steve, did you have any more? No, John?
Way back in...
John, can you press the button, just, just for the sake of...
Way back in 2013, I stepped out of line because I was Chair of Tenet Advisory, and I had to sort of pass on that to state that I, I supported the registry approach, just get, you know, get it done. And it could be done for, for safe, for safe, healthy, and immediately necessary situations. So I just wanted on the record that somehow, I'd like to see the, you know, this opened up and to move along to the registry.
Here, here, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have Nigel, and then we'll wrap it up. Oh, sorry, I apologize, Nigel, I need to recognize Terry, who did, and then councillor Whitehead on the second time, and then Nigel.
I just had a couple of comments as well afterwards.
So, so just a couple of things that I want to make clear for, for the record, because I know that councillor McKay and I led the first go-around on these issues. And when we worked with the tenants, sorry, the, the, all the stakeholders, it was clear that there was a period of being all-branch being handed out to council to see if we can find other solutions. And with that good-faith offer, we actually tabled the rental process, you know, the, creating the bylaw for registering rentals, to have this very discussion. But I made it clear when I did an immediate interview, I made it clear that this doesn't go away if we don't have a solution. So I'm not clear why anyone out there would be confused that we weren't, this wasn't still a possibility, because it never, ever died on the ordered paper. And the other thing, and I actually went back to my office to see if I could find it, but I had a litany of real estate advertising that advertised revenue-generating homes with several tenants and the whole bit. I remember raised that, and even with our bylaw, because these were illegal places, and I'm not talking about two or three, I'm talking a number of pages. I remember contacting, because some of the real estate people I knew directly, I called them directly and said, "You're advertising an illegal unit, a legal house." And I couldn't understand if there's ethics and morals and, and if the real estate, now hopefully we're going in the right direction. But certainly back then, it seemed to me that the profit was more important, the, the potential and the value of that home was more important for the return to the real estate agent than the ethics of selling that home relative to what the true operation was. So I hoping, and I think you just sort of identified, which was refreshing, I'm hoping that we could really start canning those real estate agents that are knowingly advertising these revenue-generating buildings when they know they're illegal units, because one thing I've learned over a very short time, a period of time, is no one's more educated on our zoning and, and bylaws than real estate agents. So they're going in there with their eyes wide open and they're still advertising it. So I'm hoping you tighten up on, on that front, you said you are, I take your word for it. But that really was a big problem over a long period of time for me.
And thank you very much, councillor Whitehead. The, the tightening up, I would say that we're constantly working towards that, but 25% of the real estate handled through our geographical area is done through out-of-board members, okay, like your Realtors, people from Toronto, which we're, we're all aware that we've had a huge influx of that type of business in the city, that may not be familiar. And we really promote as an association on, on all of our ads, and every time we have a chance to media, to deal, for people to deal with local Realtors, because that's all we have jurisdiction over is our members. So it's a problem, we recognize it, and I think that's why we're, we're more supportive of the registry now than what we've ever been, so.
Thank you. Nigel, and then Paul. And then hopefully we can wrap this up.
Thank you. You mentioned that when somebody makes a conversion, until that goes through, there's only one garbage pickup, that's absolutely incredibly wrong. I've seen people on my street, two lots of blue boxes, two garbage, how on earth is the garbage person supposed to know that this is not a single-family? So don't make, make statements like that when they're not, they're not supportable. I wish people would not do that, it bothers me.
Nigel, I'm sorry, I, I just, I just want to caution you that we're not here to attack the presenters. If we, if you're hard on the que, you raised the point earlier, in terms of Verivip, I raised the point, but let's not use this forum to attack the presenters.
And, and just on there, and that shows how kind of, how flawed it is, the garbage people in certain areas, I guess. in certain areas, I guess, okay? Because we just had an issue down there at King and Gage, where that was a lot of illegal dumping at the corner of King and Gage from some of the two-family, three-family homes there. So it is happening. Nigel, my apologies if I made it sound like it's happening all over, but if the city knows that that's a single family and there's two bags out, they get nailed with, you know, the tag or whatever, so.
Sorry to cut that short. I hope everybody understands why we want to kind of wrap this up, hopefully. Not to have any disrespect, but we're spending a lot of time on this. Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of comments, and I think this could be a miraculous breakthrough, quite frankly, from, based on all the conversations that we've been having here. One of the things that I see of great value in this type of a program, or really, quite frankly, any other program we deem would be suitable, is this could be, this could be the start of, if such a program were created, anyone applying through the program could then be registered, and certainly the tracking would begin. So as far as trying to, we have very differing opinions on different things, but as far as trying to achieve a middle ground, I would certainly support, if in the end we're able to create a program, that those participants that go through that program would then be registered, and then we would continue forward from there, and we could actually get some real data towards this. So I do like that idea. I recognize that there's a side that wants registry, there's a side that doesn't, et cetera. But I think that could be through a new program such as this. I think that could be just built into the program, so automatically we could start to aggregate some data. So I think that's of value. And the second point, the last point I'm making here, is just, I believe the intent of creating this type of a program, or any program really, is to provide a viable avenue for owners to be able to use to come forward proactively, instead of like, as Mr. Green said, unfortunately, once they get caught where my options are trying to utilize a Section 19 in an improper sense. So if we were to create something, it would be, it's obviously something that would be available to owners, which currently is not, that they could come forward proactively in advance of potential enforcement. Because certainly, as it stands right now, going through a costly and time-consuming, complex rezoning process is not feasible for most owners that have these types of properties. So to say it's easy, just do it right now, is not, is not an accurate statement. So I would look forward to us collectively, whether it's this or any program we choose to design, to create an avenue for owners that don't have to live in fear of being enforced upon, but can actually go to a department or whomever and try to do this in a proactive sense, and recognize themselves that they have a problem property and they want to resolve it, but give them a feasible solution. Thank you.
May I please have a motion received? Moved by Renee, seconded by Paul, all is in favor, carried. Thank you very much, Donna.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Yep. I do, I do want to reiterate, it's a bit of a, that was a bit of an unusual procedural end-around of how we have been having conversations here. And I don't want this to be a precedent in terms of having members of committee delegate when we should really just be having that conversation in a very equitable manner around the table, right? We've basically given two members of this committee kind of free rein for this meeting. So we now have, coming up next...
Mr. Chair, just on that, the flood, the gates are open, and I do plan to make a presentation to this body in respect to this issue.
And we will consider it at a future date. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to, we're going to move, see what you did.
I didn't see any flood.
Okay. On to, on to item 5.1. On to item, five-minute delegations, Counselor, five-minute delegations. On to item 5.1. Renee, an update on the scope and work and feasibility of the voluntary registry working, report working group.
Thank you, Counselor Green. I think it circulated through our legislative assistant here. You have a document in front of you that kind of captures the notes of our discussion. And yes, Counselor Whitehead, we will, you know, through the chair, maybe set up a working group, depending on what you have to bring forward. So I just want to say at the outset, the process of having this working group come together, I think was really helpful to get some better understanding and clarity on the various sides of the issues as related to the work that we're attempting to do. So we spent a couple of really good meetings, having some good discussion, including reviewing the report that staff had done through the Mosaic Group at Mohawk College as part of the leadership development here at the corporation. So that was very helpful as well. Has everyone had a chance to read through the document? Rather than me sitting here and reading through everything again, I just want to maybe highlight a couple of parts of consideration, questions that we have going forward. And if that's okay with everyone through the chair, I'll just kind of move to where we're just looking for some extra qualifications. But I will say that we did talk about kind of mission vision values.
If I could just quickly, I have to pass the chair to Counselor Johnson and step out for just one moment.
Not a problem.
Please proceed. Thank you.
So if everyone's okay, I may just, I'll come, you know, I'm obviously open to questions. There's a few folks around the table who will also be able to answer some of the questions. And we, again, I can't stress enough, we really enjoyed our discussion and spending the time to get to know each other a little bit better, and building trust, and therefore building some better dialogue. So I just want to go, first of all, to page two, just highlighting again that, yes, there is no definitive data on the amount of potential illegal units there are, or, sorry, the number of secondary units, and then no data on the proportion of the units. But we are coming a little bit closer to a number on that front, working with McMaster University researchers in the geography department. We've been having this dialogue with them for a couple of years now. So I don't think that our numbers are totally off the scale, but I think there will be presentations coming forward that will help us identify that number a little bit more. We also discussed kind of the term affordable housing in and of itself, and that even though this committee is not looking at affordable housing in and of itself, the affordability factor is a very important part of this discussion. So the impact of any actions that this group takes on affordable housing stock just needs to be considered going forward. And I think that that's pretty clear, particularly when we look at how many units we may lose. So our scope of work really is that we would like that we could have some kind of summary of all the existing reports to council, because we know that there is a lot of data, and we did plow through some of that data as a bit of a working group. But I think for moving forward for feasibility studies, to go back through some of those reports and really highlight the data that can get us to potential answer. So yeah, this future-ready report was the one that we kind of chewed through. We wanted to kind of highlight there under number two, there were some concerns about what type of information might be collected under whatever type of program, whether we call it a registry or a program or whatever. And I do want to also highlight, you know, when we do collect this data, there may be information in there that, you know, could be harmful to some folks. It could be harmful or cause some damage to a particular landowner or tenant. So I think when we do set up some type of program, if we do, we may want to consider having a third party actually holding on to that data, holding on to a registry or program, just to protect all parties in this kind of thing, and I can come back to that later. We want to know a little bit more in a feasibility, how would it be used, what would the processes be involved, and what would be the cost associated with this type of program? We would also like to see additional research on other municipalities. And again, some of that research has been done, where it's talked about the type of program, but it hasn't shown us the results of those programs. So I think what we would like to see in a feasibility study is, what is the impact of that being, right? Because again, we kind of talk about it, that they've done it, but what is the impact being? And how do they do it? How do they do it differently than, from each other? Because there's no set framework moving forward on how they would do a program or a registry. If you move over to page three, feasibility study from the perspective of the working group, we would like to understand the benefits and impacts, pros and cons, for tenants or prospective tenants, landlords, enforcement, and administration. So really having a full understanding of how this impacts everybody, because we want a inclusive program that works for everyone. When we get to talking about new residential zoning regulations for secondary units and landway housing, we would like to see a better understanding of how residential zoning changes or potential changes intersect with this work, and how would it impact the registry? And I think from our discussions... Thanks, Steve. From our discussions around the table, we were really coming to the point where understanding that the work on residential zoning is really, needs to happen somehow in lockstep with whatever type of program is developed here. And we know that residential zoning, there's talk of having the residential zoning looked at next year in 2017 or 2018. And so I think it might be good work on this group to either go to Planning Committee and ask for some kind of consideration for them to see how these two pieces are really interdependent, in particular when we're talking now about Section 19. So I'm just putting that out there. We don't really mention it in our notes, but I would like us to think about, how can we talk to the Planning Department a little more directly and understand where they are at with the residential zoning piece? Because they're really, they really need to work together with what we're talking about. So yes, so that would also then involve the timeline of that work. My understanding is that some work had been done, and then it was set aside because they were looking on the commercial zoning. But we would really encourage, you know, through you, Chair, to get Planning Department to get back to us on that, or us to go to Planning and see where that's at. It's very, very important for that work to start taking place, because then you can see what the feasibility is of having the appropriate residential zoning, and what impact that might have on any type of program. Because if the zoning was updated to reflect the current reality, would we be still having some folks not in compliance like the perception is now? So for existing non-compliant units, we'd like to see an outline of how a simplified registration and compliance process and certification could be achieved prior to active enforcement. So again, this is where we have, active enforcement has been kind of taking place, where there's lots of pieces that are still missing in the dialogue. So, you know, again, if we had this process in place, would it reduce the number, the amount of active enforcement that needs to take place or not? And then connected to that, what are some potential incentives that are available to bring non-compliant units into compliance? So again, with this current federal government being more attuned to having a national housing strategy, what financial incentives may come from that? Where are we as a municipality in kind of dialoguing with the federal government on that? And is there an opportunity to create a dialogue that ties all this together, where incentives could be tied to joining a program, which could then be tied to bringing you into compliance? Some other thoughts are that some people around the table thought a voluntary registry was a good place to start. And I'm smiling over here at Erin, because we've been back and forth whether or not this is a good place to start. But even, you know, the dialogue today sounds like, whether we call it a registry or a program, there is a recognition that we need some kind of tool to address this. So however we present this tool, talk about this tool, I don't think this committee would be sitting here if we did not agree that something needs to change to bring everyone together. The agreement around the table was that proactive enforcement is a positive step. So my sense is that we would like to see that continue in some form or another. It's helpful for everyone. And so we would also then like to see the real number for the secondary market, as the report currently estimates it at about 16,345 units. So we need to determine what that real number is. And as I said earlier, we're starting to get to that number, and I think staff here in the Housing Division are working really closely on defining that. And finally, and this was a big question, because I think in 2013, when we were doing this work, it was really targeting buildings with six units and under. And as a working group, we found that we didn't really have a sense of, for the overall work of this group and for the overall work of a registry, are we still talking six or fewer, or are we talking about all rental units across the city? So again, I think it would be helpful for staff to help us identify what the cutoff line is. Are we talking about all or six and under? And I know in 2013, when we were dealing with the City Housing Hamilton, for example, was one of the major considerations as to, if we ask City Housing Hamilton to then register all their 7,000-odd units, what would the financial impact of that be on City Housing Hamilton, or any other social housing provider for that matter? So I think that's a question that I think part of the feasibility study work needs to be defined for us to be able to do our work effectively. So essentially, that's what we would like to see move forward in the feasibility study, and I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. You've heard the information as presented. I do appreciate the work that that committee's done, kind of moving this along. Counselor Johnson, followed by Counselor Whitehead.
Thanks very much. I had the privilege of working with some of you over the summer on this work, and the conversations were easier than I thought they were going to be because of the goodwill that was around the table. So I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow subcommittee members. It was a pleasure to work on this, and whatever fruit is born from it, I know fruit will be born, and that's just an encouraging feeling. So thanks very much, and thanks to our spokesperson.
Counselor Whitehead, my apologies.
It appears I have missed you.
No problem.
Again.
No problem. You're doing a great job, Mr. Chair. First of all, I don't support a voluntary registry period, so I'm not even sure why we're going down this road. The reason why is we had a volunteer lobby register. People recall, we had one person over 10 years. It doesn't get to us where I believe we need to get fast enough. And I think a volunteer registry is only going to attract the good operators, unfortunately. It's not the good operators we're after. We're after the bad operators. And there's no way that a bad operator is coming forward on a volunteer registry. So I don't think it goes far enough. I think that the only two options, other than anything else that's on the table that I could, and I've always envisioned, obviously rental licensing was my number one, but by virtue of working with this group, I was open, being open-minded to other solutions. Registration is not a bad one, it's something I can live with, but that's not a volunteered registration. That is a required registration with a lot of, and a lot of the things that we identified in this excellent report that was presented by Renee is all applicable, whether it's a volunteer registry or a registry. I'm not sure how we got started on a volunteer registry. I don't think anyone around this table is naive to believe that bad operators are going to voluntarily come forward and sign on a registry. I do believe, and I think I've heard it around, and I'm proud of the comments I've heard around this table, that data is so important. Social Plan Research Council does an incredible job with data, and I think it serves a number of areas when you have and able to collect the data, and how many units you have, and where they're located, and what kind of quality of life is taking place in those neighborhoods. So it's not just, to me, this goes beyond just the safety of the tenants and quality. It really gets into the quality of life and impacts on neighborhoods, so that we can have it studied, looked at, and make the appropriate adjustments going forward. So I'm not on for a voluntary registry from the start, although I wasn't here when this was initiated, and I understand and appreciate this was a beginning of something. I would hope the beginning was a registry versus a volunteer registry. I hope you hear my comments. Maybe they were already discussed when this originally was raised. But our experience on anything volunteer is that the good operators are very compliant. But it's not those, the ones that are causing us the grief. And so I don't think this will accomplish the problematic areas and concerns that we have throughout the city. So those are my observations and comments on that front. But I really thought that the, how this report is broken down and identified how you go throughout this process, we understand who we're actually going to ask to, or who would be required to be part of that registry, is very valid. And it actually would be applicable even to rental housing, rental licensing as well. So I just wanted to provide my congratulations to the committee for some really good work. But I thought it would be me to put my position out and provide some clarity in why my position is what it is. So thank you for listening.
Steve, followed by Renee, followed by Larry, followed by Paul. Steve, the floor is yours.
So I want to thank the working group for their good work in that presentation. I think I am on. Yep. Thanks, Nigel. And just a couple of thoughts. I certainly agree with what the Counselor, Counselor Whitehead, has just said with regard to a voluntary registry. I have no confidence that that would be useful. And so I won't go on further. He said it very well. I'm wondering, when we're talking about six and less, six and less units, when I heard earlier conversation from our presenters, there was talk of Section 19 being potentially a big solution, but Section 19 only applies to two units or less. So I'm not sure... So I'm not sure what the, you know, where that is about, because that would then leave quite a number of properties that the proposed solution would, would not address. I'm wondering, and this is a question, is are we talking about a registration of landlords, or are we talking about a registration of units? Through you, Mr. Chair.
From our discussions, I just want, I can address two points here. So we're talking about the registration of landlords, so we're understanding and negotiating with the owners. And the second piece would be, in terms of the voluntary piece, we're basing this also on the recommendation of the Future Forward Working Group, which was made up of planning staff, sorry, staff from the planning department. Your department? Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, was there a discussion of the number of units being what is registered? And I would add the observation that that really is what's going to give us some of this meaningful data. I'm not sure that a registry of landlords will give us the data that we've been talking Was there, was there, through you, Mr. Chair, was there conversation about a registry for the units?
Not from, from our discussion in the working group, no.
Hold on, we still have a speaker's list, is there a point of order?
I understood that when they registered, Mr. Chair, that it's not just landlord, but there will be, it's almost like a survey, so when they register, it'll be how many rental units, et cetera, and address, so that information would be part of the form.
Verifiable information.
Okay, thank you. And I, I made a point of noticing, of observing that the earlier presentation did not include stakeholders, other neighborhood residents. And so I would just point out that again, we're talking about something here, where we're talking about the investors, property owners, we're talking about renters, but there's a big group of stakeholders that are missing here as well. They would fit in, I believe, to number four, could be E, which would be other, other neighborhood residents, who would certainly be impacted by pros and cons. Those are not my only stakeholder of interest by any means, I just keep mentioning them because of the ones we keep missing, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Renee, here fine, we have Larry, Paul, and Aaron. Larry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Great work. I rushed right to the very end.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Renee, there was one comment made that I think is quite valid and goes towards the idea of building trust between parties. And that is whether it's a program or registry is where the data will be held. And I think it's a very valid point to suggest that may be a third party. Only by experience, we have represented clients and tried to be proactive in circumstances of getting zoning verifications, et cetera, which they have executed, only to have bylaw enforcement show up a short while after that. And the client looks to us and say, why did you advise us to do that? And we say, that's the right thing to do, but they're upset and angry. So when you see those types of things happening, and you're trying to suggest to someone to do the right thing, and then they get enforced upon or visited by bylaw, that's not a good situation. So I would, I think there's tremendous value in a lot of what the working group did, and I think that's a key component to make a third party sort of keep, or if you will, keep the data and trust, just to prevent any of those types of situations occurring moving forward. Otherwise, the buy-in to anything will be quite limited, I believe. Thank you.
Just second time speaker.
I think the, the presentation earlier and our discussions, we're leading to more questions than answers, and there are so many issues that we've got to be very careful. It's been brought up that homeowners are affected, quality of life for other people on the street besides the tenants and the investor. Accessibility has been spoken about. A lot of these things, it's more than just the licensing, it's the intensification. If you're talking about parking, some people want intensification, and some people want urban sprawl, they don't want intensification. But these issues have to be also split down to certain extents. We've got student issues, which are completely different from issues in other parts of the city. I think we need a lot more discussion and look at some of these things in more detail. And with regards to the six units and fewer or all units, I think staff at that point said they know every building, or they have a list of every building that has seven or more units, and they know who the owner is, and they do go and proactively inspect them when they, whenever they want to. So that was the reason why previously we were talking about six units and under, because it's the duplex, the triplex, that is the zoning and intensification sort of issue. A 50-unit apartment building, there's 50 units, it's not changing or causing issues that way. So I think we have to be very careful in what we're doing. We don't want to rush down anything that's going to close a lot of units. I was just looking in the Hamilton Spectator, July the 14th, New York has approved units that range from 260 to 360 square feet. We have to fix that portion of it before we go down to licensing, zoning, or anything else. If we're going to stick with 699 square feet, we're going to lose almost all the illegal units there are, nobody's going to be able to come into compliance. That part has to come first before we go down some of these other, go down looking at some of these other things. So I could go on all night, so I'm going to stop there.
I appreciate that. May I please have a motion received? Moved by Nigel?
I just want to speak to this.
Oh, okay.
I just want to bring to everybody's attention item three in the scope of work. Very important. Getting information without any backup is not going to be helpful to this committee or council. We need to know what other municipalities' experience was. So as a member of that subcommittee, I really was insistent that that be in there. And even item four and five sort of ties in as well. But if we don't, if we're giving information that doesn't give us the whole total picture, if somebody else has brought in licensing and it didn't work, we need to know that. If they brought in voluntary or nonvoluntary registration, we need to know what, did it achieve what it was supposed to do, and would they change anything? Municipalities will give you that information if you ask for it. We just have to direct our staff to ask for that information. That's it.
Second time speaker. You're not second time speaker. There's John still. Sorry Nigel, were you done with the floor?
I'm done.
Yep, John?
Just a quick question to anyone, I've been working through. Has anybody noticed that the rental housing advisory community in Toronto, we're working towards this? All kinds of recommendations, what was it, you know? Sure, you're working on, no, I mentioned it last, last time.
Yes, you did.
They've got a massive amount of, they've had meetings, or they had two months, or 50 about three this year. And I'm not going to reiterate what they've done, but they've got...
Yeah, and I believe that that was kind of covered, and Nigel, looking at the comparators, Toronto will definitely be one. I appreciate it. Counselor Whitehead.
Oshawa, Guelph, Niagara, I mean, we're not short of examples of very successful rental licensing approaches, period. It's not something new, and so I think I'm more open to hearing the negatives about that, those experiences versus the, because I know what the positives are. And I think that hopefully we get and delve into that at some point in time. I don't think we need to go beyond the single-family homes that are being converted into duplexes, triplexes, and four, five, six units, I think that covers it. Anything over that, let's be clear, there are other avenues that don't exist to those six and under. You have, you could have tenant associations, we actually have a greater level of access to multi-dwelling buildings for our officers, our public health, because they can go directly to those particular tenants, observe the issues, and address those issues. I always thought this was really about the ones we can't get to, and we're trying to resolve. And the issue was evidentiary, and what we heard so many times is illegal units were being done behind, you know, dark of night, and drywall was coming in, and rooms were being converted, and people were living in unsafe circumstances, and our officers had to obtain evidence. And the only way they could obtain evidence is they have to get access to the building, and thus you got this vicious circle where they, it was very difficult to obtain the evidence to lay charges, made it more difficult, more challenging, and a lot more workload for, for our officers. So this, I thought, was one, what I hadn't anticipated was whether it's a registry or a licensing regime, that when they signed up, it would be a form, and then in that form, it would have who owns the building, the address of the building, how many units is contained in the building, and what other, whatever other pertinent information would be actually on the form. That would be your database. The other thing it would enable, is would enable that our fire, our billing, and whoever else needs to inspect those billings, to give it the stamp of approval that it's zoning verified, it is, it's meeting all the, the building code requirements to, for those two, three, or whatever amount of units in those particular buildings. So this really was, I thought, targeting a process to where there was a void of accountability. I think there is a greater level of accountability in multi-dwellings, and I don't, I could give you a litany of tools that we've used. You can create tenant associations, which is very difficult in a two and three duplex or triplex. I mean, there's so many, when, when, when there's unsafe conditions and so forth, you don't have that kind of empowerment in that six unit, and that is what's causing problems in the middle of neighborhoods. And, you know, whether you like it or not, the multi-dwelling billings aren't causing havoc in the community, it's causing maybe havoc in regards to the quality and the safety of the tenancy in those buildings, but it isn't coming outside the building. What we're dealing with are issues not only safety in the building, but actually things that impose an impact on neighborhoods. So again, I want to make it clear that I think that that six range is probably the right target. That way you can focus like a laser beam with the right tools to get the job done. And that's where I am.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, sorry, I have to speak myself. Okay, I have a meeting over at the Spirit of our town, you can take, uh, the press.
We always appreciate your presence. Thank you so much for being here this afternoon as a volunteer member, John. You should track your volunteer hours, you've probably got hundreds of thousands in there over the course of your lifetime, days and years. Thanks, John. Aaron. On my apology, Counselor Johnson, followed by Aaron. Oh, you're, yes, okay.
Yeah, if we're looking for information about what's happened in other municipalities, I think we should be cautious. Municipalities who have brought in licensing, the actual municipal government may say, oh yes, we've done this. Maybe we want to talk to landlords and tenants in those areas and find out if other problems have occurred there that the municipality hasn't picked up on. You know, municipality could say, we licensed X number of units, we're doing great, but that may not be the full picture.
Thank you for that point.
I'm reading right now a really great book, brand new, published by the Town and Gown Association. And many of you will know that Town and Gown is the official coalition of stakeholders in Ontario interested in the question of university-community relations. So it's a very targeted and interesting public policy think tank and coalition. And to make a long story short, in this official publication of the Town and Gown Association, they list best practices, best strategies based on their empirical analysis of community relations between universities and surrounding neighborhoods and licensing.
In a lot of ways, this feels like our first meeting. So with that being said, do we have a motion to receive the report? Moved by Whitehead, seconded by Paul, all those in favor, carried, and may I please have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Nick, seconded by, oh, my apologies, I just wanted, my apologies, Bob Wood is here from the Hamilton Legal Clinic, and I, and you may have been introduced the last time, but you are here, you're the alternate. Yep, number two in the programs, but number one in our hearts, we appreciate you for being here. All those in favor, adjourned. Thank you.